Well, good morning. Welcome to the Pinal County Board of Supervisors' April Fools' Day 2022. We're not going to pull any jokes on you, I don't think, but we'll see what happens. We are in order. First item is consent agenda, and it's all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. And is there anything anybody would like to have called? Pulled, rather? No? No? Seeing none? Can I get a motion for items A and B?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve consent items A and B as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. And item number two. Discussion approval/disapproval of the Pinal County two applications for fireworks display of Pyrotech Special Effects Incorporated to conduct two firework displays at Country Thunder West located at 2585 East Waterway, Florence, Arizona, 85132. There's a presenter here, Mr. Komet. You're presenting, I believe. Surprise, April Fools'.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board. Chuck Komet, I'm the emergency manager for the county. Excuse me. The only thing really want to present on this is the stipulations that we asked about with regards to fireworks. You know, just as a quick reminder, when Country Thunder comes in, they're basically setting up a small city for that period of time. There's very little infrastructure out there, you know, normally throughout the year, so they're providing a lot of that for us in order to meet, you know, certain codes and everything. For specifics on some of this, I would bring up Wade Brennan from my team. He's an excellent resource for fire code and for other things, and he was the one that worked with them on this particular matter for the stipulations, which they did meet on the 25th, so just two days after the memo.
Great.
Anything else?
Any questions by anyone? Oh, Mr. Goodman, thanks for joining in. Any questions?
I don't know who it'd be, Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Komet or other, just about who's covering the fire service and is that written into the plan? I just heard on the news we're supposed to have a ravaging wildfire season. I'd hate to have it start with a fireworks display.
Come on up, Wade. The contracts are in place with Florence Fire in particular, but that's also for the complete event, and then they have particulars that are written into their contingency plan for that.
And also the fire, the water tanks that were put out there. Any other?
If you want to give details about that for the benefit of the public, that'd be great.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of board. I'm Wade Brennan with Office of Emergency Management. Yeah, Country Thunder is, along with their pyrotechnic contractor, are putting a number of fire protection safeguards in place, including they will have some certified firefighters on the stage with fire extinguishers. They'll have separation between the stage and any of the audience members. They've taken a lot of safeguards as far as making sure that the pyrotechnics themselves are operated safely and stored and transported in a very safe manner. We really appreciate all of the steps that Country Thunder's taken to help make this a very safe event, including the pyrotechnics.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? In that case, seeing none, in that case, I'd ask for a motion for item two.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve item two as presented with the Office of Emergency Management recommended stipulations for each application outlined in the attached memo dated March 23, 2022.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in the second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Item number three. Discussion approval/disapproval of the fiscal year 2022 Pinal County Employee Compensation Plan. I won't wind all the details. Ms. Shepherd, how are you this morning?
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board. Mary Ellen Shepherd, Deputy County Manager. First of all, thank you so much for this special session, which allows us to bring some really critical employee items to your attention. The great resignation, so designated due to higher-than-normal quit rates. The great reshuffle used to describe employees who are changing jobs in search of more fulfilling roles with greater flexibility. These are clever characterizations of an all-too-real phenomenon that's occurring right here in Pinal County. In fact, in 2020, our voluntary resignation rate was 9%. In 2021, it was even less, at 8.82%. So far, in fiscal year 2022, it's at 11.6%, and we are forecasted to be at 15.4% by fiscal year end. These are concerning figures to each of us, to our department directors, to our elected officials, as they work to continue to provide quality services to our community. But today's request before you isn't so much about those who have left, it is really about those who are here. Their commitment through the pandemic, their commitment to our county, and we want them to know they are valued and we need them. And that's why it's a retention incentive that you're asked to approve. It's also recognition of the financial pressures that our employees are facing. As you all are more than aware, our inflation rate has increased, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics in our region, it's up 10.9% from a year ago, in large part because of energy. We know that this has a negative impact to our employees in part due to location, and we want them to know we're aware of that as well. We know that pay is only a part of the equation, and we will continue to focus on pay, but we also focus on benefits, and Angie will speak to that shortly. We're focusing on flexibility, culture, career opportunities, and more. As such, today's request shouldn't be viewed as a one-time event, but rather a continuation of our collective efforts to value and retain our employees. If I may, before I get into the specific details, I would like to thank and acknowledge some of the team who is focusing on these critical issues. Randy Tracy, our in-arm HR Director, Colleen Campbell, Employment Services Manager, who's focused on recruitment, Kim Verdugo, HR, Senior HR Analyst, focused on compensation, Danielle Watkins, Employee Benefits Managers, doing a phenomenal job to ensure we are looking at our employees' needs holistically. Martine Sanchez, who is incredible with the data, so when I speak to you about what's happening in the county, I have confidence it's real, accurate data. And of course, Angie and her whole budget and finance teams, who are as a partner to this, and ERP, who helps make it happen through the system. So with all of that background, and thank you for letting me set the stage, if you approve today's request, here's what it'll mean. It'll mean that all eligible employees, full and part-time, who are employed as of December 31, 2021, would be eligible for up to $1,500, and I say "up to" because it would be prorated for part-time. And this is an incentive to let them know we're committed to them now, as well as into the future. This pay, the effective date of the plan, if approved, would be today, and employees who have at least six months' continuous employment and who have demonstrated meeting performance standards would see the pay scheduled on April 22. For those who achieve the six months demonstrating, meeting performance standards after today, they would receive the incentive on July 1, 2022. I will emphasize, this is a continuation and a beginning, both, on our efforts to ensure our total compensation is as it needs to be to be the number-one employer as we know we are. We will be back in front of you, tentatively scheduled for April 20, with a far more detailed overview of turnover, compensation, and the state of our workforce in Pinal County. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? I see one. Start with Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. When you do exit interviews, is pay the primary issue?
Yes.
And I know we're going to get into it further down the line, but since we're talking about pay today.
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Kavanaugh, yes, pay consistently is the number-one issue that is communicated by our employees exiting.
Okay. And then Ms. Woods is here, I think, to talk about budget, but why wouldn't we set this up for this retention bonus, another one in 90 days, and another one in 180 days? Why wouldn't we do that?
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Kavanaugh, you're not going to get any argument from me with respect to investing in our employees, letting them know that there will be a return on their investment in us. What that looks like, when we come before you in April, we will have a whole array of suggestions, not just HR's voice, but that which has come from elected officials, department directors, and our employees.
Okay.
Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To follow up on Supervisor Kavanaugh's question, if you were to graph the exit of county employees, would you not see a higher exit when the private sector is very, very busy, offer more money, and when the private sector tanks, goes into recession, that we find more employees gravitate to the public sector for safe haven?
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Miller, based upon my experience, my response to that would be yes. That would be my expectation, that in part, our turnover is driven by what's happening in the private sector. However, if I may, what we're experiencing now is just a whole different look at anything we've experienced in the past with respect to how employees are viewing work, flexibility, and prioritizing other things happening in their lives.
And I wouldn't disagree with that second part of your statement. That really was not my question. But, so, I mean, the question I originally wanted to bring to you is probably more of a technical split in hair kind of thing. So, and we've run into this before, if I'm working here, but I change departments, or I move to another agent, you know, another sector of our, does that employment continue? Or, because I know, all of a sudden, you're back on probation when you move from, like, let's say we were Public Works and you went to Finance, or Finance to whatever, you know, so when those transfers happen. For this bonus, will that continuous employment with the county be considered as a continuous employment, even though you may have found yourself on probation? Because that is, I think that's the policy, and I think it's not a bad policy, but it does kind of split hairs and has caused grief in the past. Do you follow my question?
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Miller, I believe I do. And so let me be very clear. We encourage career growth in Pinal County, and that means when someone is promoted or changed, the policies that the board has approved in recent years, those employees continue to be eligible for any retention incentive increase if this is approved, across the board increase. So it is their continued employment with Pinal County as an employer. Pay has not been based on a specific department or elected office. Is that responsive to your question?
I think so.
So yes, they're eligible, yes, they'll get it.
Because, you know, and because that, it came about at one point when we did a pay increase of 2.5% or 3%. People that had transferred into a different department didn't meet the six-month criteria because they, so I just wanted to make sure this application of this program that we're considering today, that it doesn't get interrupted by advancement to any of the employees.
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Miller, I can tell you with absolute certainty, in the last two years, that has not been an issue, as long as the employee was meeting performance standards. The promotion or transfer did not make them ineligible for any increases approved by the board.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Comments?
Not.
Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve item three.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item number three as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. In opposition, hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thought I was going to do something, didn't you? Item number four. Discussion approval/disapproval of the recommended fiscal year 2022, 2023, Pinal County Health Benefits Trust Funding Rate Increase. Ms. Woods, there you are.
Good morning, Chairman McClure, members of the board. Angie Woods, I'm the Director of Finance and Budget. This morning, this board is being asked to approve an increase of 20.8% to the Pinal County Benefits Trust, based upon actuarial calculations provided to us by our benefits consultant, CBIZ, and recommended by our Benefits Trust Board for your approval. The factors contributing to the increase in claim costs are a result of COVID and the number of large claims that we have experienced since July of 2021. Also a factor in this decision is the newness of the plan, and therefore, the limited amount of data available to smooth out what may be a spike versus what may be continuing plan performance. Regardless, any surplus goes into our own trust account, and therefore, is being recommended for its sufficiency to cover plan costs and/or support an increase in the reserve. Mike Barberio from CBIZ is here with us today, if you have any specific questions in regards to the increase. Before we entertain questions from Mr. Barberio, I would like to take a moment to express my appreciation to the teams in Finance and Budget, Human Resources, and IT that have worked this last year on implementing our Health Benefit Trust. I'm very grateful for their hard work and dedication. It's taken a lot of hours to do this, and I appreciate their efforts. With that, do you have any questions for our consultant?
Are there any questions? No. Oh, I see one brewing over there on the left, but no, no, okay. No questions? Wow, okay, this is just another great benefit for the employees, that we're able to cover their costs without any increase to the employees.
Sir, this agenda item is actually approving the increase to the cost. The next agenda item will discuss the funding levels for the employees.
I'm just jumping ahead. Okay. So, no questions. Do I have a motion for item four?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item number four as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Woods, appreciate it. But don't go anywhere, because... Item number five. Discussion approval/disapproval of the funding, of funding, the approved Pinal County Health Benefits Increase fiscal year '22, '23 by increasing the employer-paid contributions only. Ms. Woods?
Thank you, Chairman. As we've done in recent years, the board is being asked to approve a budget allocation for the county to fund the increase to the cost of employee health care for the upcoming fiscal year. In order to ensure that no employees' premiums are increased, the most costly plan becomes the basis for our funding structure. Given the inflationary pressures our employees are experiencing currently and consistent with our commitment to ensuring our total compensation is competitive in today's market, this approach for the upcoming fiscal year is recommended. With the change to our self-funded trust, we have an opportunity to offer additional plans to our employees that have innovative mechanisms to develop more effective care. Because the effectiveness and efficiencies of these plans, they may become more of a benchmark used for rate-setting and rate-funding in the future. For example, for the most highly utilized plan, the Performance Network is 21% more cost-efficient. We have the CEO from Aetna Banner with us today to explain further their design vision for their performance plans.
Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman McClure and the board. I'm Tom Grothe, CEO of Banner Aetna, and I can say that we are very privileged to administer the benefits for Pinal County. And we wanted to talk a little bit about the constructs of the networks that we offer. So, we offer two different networks. One is the Plus Network, and that is a very broad network that includes the majority of the providers in both, you know, Maricopa and Pinal County, including, you know, the Banner, the Honor Hospital Systems, Dignity, Abrazo, Mayo, are all part of that Plus Network. We also offer another network, which we refer to as the Performance Network, and it's the one that's your basic benefit plan that's offered. And that's the one we were referencing that has achieved lower costs than the counterpart plans that are in the Plus Network. And so, you know, the question is, you know, how does this work? How does this, this basic network, Performance Network, generate lower costs for Pinal County and its members? And it's really a couple of key points. First is that because it's a network that's focused on Banner and Honor in Pinal and Maricopa Counties, Banner gives us a significant discount off of their normal services. So, somebody that's seeking care through that basic Network, Performance Network, Banner reduces the cost of care by over 20%, at least 20%. So, a $5,000 cost at that hospital becomes $4,000 through that Performance Network. So that saves money for the members, as well as Pinal County. So that's, you know, a portion of how we drive savings through it. The other piece is that the network is a clinically-integrated network, and what's the benefit of that? There's really two areas where it really generates benefit. One is that it's got value-based care components in it, and value-based care is trying to reward doctors for delivering more efficient, quality care. And so, through this program, we incent the doctors to deliver higher-quality, more efficient care on behalf of the members. And we evaluate all the doctors on their performance, and, you know, across, you know, these two counties, we have neighborhoods, and we report back to the doctors in each neighborhood on how they're performing relative to one another, so they can get feedback on how efficient they are, how much quality they're driving on behalf of the members. And so, Pinal County is its own neighborhood, and so we meet with the doctors and talk to them about the results. We share the results of the doctors with one another, and, you know, the doctors are very competitive, so they're going to work to try to, you know, be as successful in the programs as possible and efficient and driving the highest quality. So that helps to deliver a better level of care for your members. We also, because Banner is a half-owner of our company, we provide double weighting for Banner Aetna members, because they evaluate the performance of the doctors across various carriers that Banner Health Network supports, but for a Banner Aetna member, if they close a gap in care, or they provide more efficient care, it counts double. So they'll focus more on our Banner Aetna members. Additionally, the other key point is that it's a clinically-integrated network, and so the idea is that we try to connect with all the providers in the market through a data exchange, which is through Innovaser, that provides information to the doctors about care that's being rendered on behalf of the members, and so that they have more information about, you know, what's been going on with the health of these members, what gaps in care they might have. You know, somebody hasn't had a mammogram in a number of years, they haven't had their physical. It gives a pop-up when a member goes in to see the doctor to say, hey, Mike's here, Mike hasn't had this test done, you know, make sure that gets closed so we can deliver better care on behalf of the members. And so, it's that combination of greater discounts, the reporting back to the doctors to drive more efficient, quality care on behalf of your members, and then connecting information so that when people go to get care, the doctors have more information about what the status is with that individual, so they can deliver better care for the members. And so, you know, we have seen, you know, so the way it's set up is that, you know, we have three standard plan designs, the benefits are exactly the same across those plan designs, but we offer two network options, the basic option and the plus option, oops, sorry. And that basic network across all three options has driven, you know, significant savings versus the other through those components that we just discussed.
Good night. You mentioned Maricopa and Pinal County. What about Pima County?
Pima County has a Performance Network as well, and so down in Pima County, it's based off of Banner University System and Tucson Medical Center, and their associated doctors, as well as about 70% of the doctors in Pima County participate in that Performance Network. So I think, you know, one of the things is, there's sometimes thought, this is a cheaper plan, so the benefits aren't as good. Well, that's not the case. The benefits are exactly the same, and there's great access. And so, in Maricopa and Pinal, it's 60% of the hospital beds are part of that network, and over 60% of the doctors in the market are part of it. So they're very broad coverage, great access to quality care across all three of those counties.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I see one to the right. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you mentioned Mayo Clinic as part of the network. The problem is, you can't get into Mayo Clinic. It's, there's a waiting list that's months-long. So do we, in part of our plan, are we paying to have Mayo as a part, or is it that Mayo participates and is willing to accept our patients just when they have time, they accept the funds? Can you, can you explain that? Because I'd love to get into Mayo. I personally can't.
Yeah.
And I've heard from other employees, one of the biggest problems with our plan right now is the doctors that they had are not, are no longer in-network, and so it's presenting some problems if they have a specialist they're used to going to, and how can we address that? Can we sign, help, help sign up a specialist and bring them into this program, or not?
Yeah, so we're not, we are open to adding providers that are deemed to be important for Pinal County, and we're willing to go out and recruit where necessary. I would say, from the Mayo perspective, you know, the Mayo is, you know, deemed to be a specialty hospital, and they deem themselves that way, and... And so I, I, I would say that there's no restrictions for access because you were with Banner Aetna that would be any different than if you were with the Blues or Cigna or United. You know, that's the restrictions or the limitations that Mayo has in just accessing care. So it's not anything unique to, to our program. So, but like I said, we, we are willing, if we identify specialists that, that we think are important that aren't in our network, we have very good coverage overall, but we're happy to recruit as necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve item number five as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. And thank you, finance teams. Appreciate it. All right, can I get a motion to go into executive session, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move to executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. We are in executive session. Thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.